...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone to the December 30th special meeting of the Bryan City Council. First on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the December 15th meeting. Gentlemen, you've been presented with those minutes. Any addition corrections need to be made?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Next is an ordinance providing annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for fiscal year ending December 31st. So Laurie, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number 64, 2014. An ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2014, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request of $205,000 for the, from the revolving loan fund to be transferred later to the 407 fund for a city project. An appropriation request for the improvements to the 100 to 200 blocks of North Allen Street of $462, excuse me, $462,488.20. An appropriation for the improvements to the 100, 200 blocks of North Allen Street for the water lines of $126,830.80. And an appropriation requested for the high street paving project of $36,747.18. Total amount of appropriations requested, $831,066.18.
I'll make the motion to recess.
I'll second that.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Okay, next an ordinance providing the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending December the 31st.
Ordinance number 65, 2014. An ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending December 31st, 2014. This is a transfer request from the 208 revolving loan fund to the 407 improvements to the 100, 200 blocks of North Allen Street for $300,000. This money was approved by the state of Ohio to move from our revolving loan fund, and it was just approved in this last week. This is a transfer request from the water department to the 407 improvements to the 100, 200 blocks of North Allen Street. This is for their portion of the water lines for the North Allen Street project of $63,415.40. Then a transfer of $225,903.60 from the capital improvement fund to the North Allen Street project for the city side portion of the street and sewer of the North Allen Street project. This is a transfer requested from the 408 high street paving project to close it out back to the half percent income tax fund for funds that were transferred earlier and not necessary because the state of Ohio did reimburse us the additional funds of $36,747.18, and that will close that project. In addition of $76,758.60 from the South Main Street project to the 201 half percent income tax fund, again to close the project for funds that were not needed for the project. And a transfer from the 501 electric fund of $17,341.55 to the generator maintenance fund as requested by utilities director Carlin. Total amount of transfers requested, $720,166.33.
I'd like a motion to release suspend.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. A motion to adopt.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Okay, next we have a resolution to repayment of inter-fund cash advance. Laurie, please number and read.
Resolution number 37, 2014. A resolution providing for the repayment of an inter-fund cash advance. This is a repayment of $920,293.12 from the high street paving project for the 401 capital improvement project as we have now received full reimbursement from the state of Ohio.
I'll move to suspend.
Second that.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yeah.
Tommy?
Yes.
Motion to pass.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay. Next on the agenda, number five, is an ordinance to approve the budget. Laurie, please number and read.
Ordinance number 66, 2014. An ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2015, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Mayor, was you going to make some discussion and comments on that?
Discussion here to begin with. As you know, at the end of 2013, we paid off the debt of the Don North building. That was $5.138 million. So that debt went away. And then in 2014, we paid that debt off of the wastewater plant of 1.2 million. That was over 10 years. And so that, we paid that off early. So both the Don North and the wastewater plant debts are gone, paid off early, and we're, of course, happy with that. But we've taken on new debt, of course, with the wastewater equalization basis and the police and fire building along that line. The city of Bryan receives, now I'm going to have some of this in the annual report. The city of Bryan relies on their taxes from the three tenths percent fire levy, that's a continuous levy, the 1 percent income tax, and the five tenths street and sewer. That's where the portion of our money comes for our tax collection. The Bryan Board of Public Affairs receives their revenue based on rates, and they set rates from time to time on the, on the water and TV and so forth. As well as the city has a revenue based on rates at our wastewater plant and also our refuge plant. And we did raise our rates this past year at our refuge, $1. And we're looking at our wastewater plan and having a study done to see where we stand there. Obviously, with all the needs we have out there, great possibility we might have to increase rates in this coming year. The budget, we'll go back to the budget now. The 2015 budget for council, what you have in front of you is $24,672.98 compared to 2014 of $25,284.68. So the council budget is down roughly 2.4 percent. I might say the budget committee that worked on this was Dick Reed and Rick Hoopie did a nice job along with department heads. The 2015 budget for BPA is $30,194.603 compared to $28,518.383. That is up 5.9 percent. Their biggest expense out there is the, they have a turbine that they're working with and trying to get that's over a $1.2 million repair. And they, they're going to do some land lighting upgrades and also some land improvement. So basically, the total combined city budget is $54,864,902 compared to 2014 of $53,803,071. So you see we're up about 1.97 percent. And then attached to that, you will, you see the general fund. And I had a slide that, I want to go back to that. Basically, our general fund looks, and that's the figures you have, looks something like that. And it says a general fund pie chart without the fire and the kilowatt hour tax. We get, of course, the fire levy is on its own, and the kilowatt hour tax is, where are we, around $700,000, $800,000 on that. If, if we didn't have the dollars from the fire, you see where we would be in our, in our general fund. Our general fund would be hurting right now, just to, just to point that out. Going over the budget, the city attorney's budget was up just briefly. That's $198,950, you will see on your, your paper, up about five tenths. Cemetery is up about 25 percent, and that's because they're going to put a new roof on the, the building out there in that area. Clerk Trezer stayed the same, zero. I don't know, good job, Laurie, I don't know how you managed that, but just stayed the same. As well as council, engineering is up just a little bit, about 3.4 percent, largely not, just due to projects and some of the things we have to do out there. Health department is at zero. The mayor's office is 117,250. That's down 16 percent. That's largely because we're losing an employee and I'm, I'm not hiring an individual as such. We have one individual covering both of that, so my budget is down 16 percent. Municipal court is up in the general fund, .4, or four tenths. They're, they pretty much did all their remodeling and things last year. The police department is down two tenths of a percent and might even go further. In your budget, there was something at the end, a server, and they found out after working with BMU, Ken Moore, and Joe out there, that they can do better with their server and that's what the budget says. So even though the amount in our budget is for the server, I think that's going to be less in that area. Nevertheless, even with that in there, they were down two tenths of a percent. And contingencies is up, or the same, $75,000. And the park and rec is up 1.6 percent, largely just reduces some projects up, some roofing projects and so forth out there. So overall, as I said, the total general fund budget is, is up about two tenths, .29 percent. So that isn't bad for, for the year. And then attached, you have the, the budget sheets for all the different departments. Any questions on that as we review it? It's pretty much the same. I think Laurie, from when the budget committee met with the people, it only changed 1,000, about $2,000 of both.
It didn't change very much.
Yeah. And then Bryan has a handout for the capital that he passed out. Do we have that sheet? Do you have a copy of that? This is from Bryan Whelan. The capital budget fund is down, 2014 to 2015, they're down 1.4 million from 2 million. Usual budget items are as followed with no specific items for improvement targeted yet. There's $100,000 for miscellaneous storm sewer. There's $150,000 for traffic control. There's $250,000 for asphalt paving. We intend on doing various parts of the city following rotation of our major asphalt paving project. Final determination will be completed after the winter weather. $350,000 for miscellaneous sanitary sewer improvements has been earmarked to work for this year. We intend to install, install a new sanitary sewer on Brunacar Way west of North Main Street to serve the recently purchased property of the industrial park. $295,000 is budgeted for full depth removal in the Belmont Oakland area. Several other smaller projects will be completed, will be completed on a reactive basis as well. The street department and the sewer crew are on a schedule of cleaning and camera inspecting all the sanitary sewers in the city. And as bad areas are found, we address them at either repair in-house, using our crews, or if the job is too large, we outsource the project to a local contractor. As you are aware, we are awarding a project today as well as with $2014 for a full depth removal of the 100 and 200 block of North Allen Street. As, as other street reconstructions project, a new street will be curbed and gutted as well as a new sidewalk will be installed. New water and sewer will also be installed as needed. This project is partially funded by a $300,000 waiver of the funded grant from the city's revolving loan fund. 215 will be a busy year according to Bryan and the engineering department will try to handle that. If you have any questions, see Bryan. So basically, that's the budget all the way down through. You can see that the Bryan, the BPA had their budget. They did a tremendous job. They, they had that at their meeting and basically went over their complete budget, what they have in, in the line of up and down and so forth. And that's basically, I guess, all that I have to comment on. And unless anybody from the budget committee has anything else to say on that. It's a long process. There's a lot of, lot of things to deal with, and I think we're, we're staying close to almost zero budgeting.
Okay.
I don't have anything to add. I think the only thing I'm concerned is our operating expenses continue, and they always will go up on an annual basis. And it's our, you know, capital budget items that we've been able to either eliminate or decrease of the spending that keeps us in line. And someday, we're probably not going to be able to do that. We're going to have to spend more money on the capital side, which will cause an increase in the budget. But I think for going forward, it's a good budget, and I think we're, we're okay for next year.
I noticed that all the lines, anticipated revenue, and especially those transferring in from the 1 percent, half percent, they seem to be going down each year. Of course, at the end of November, we were 10 percent down over, over the year in collection. We haven't finished December yet, but I anticipate being down. We certainly won't gain 10 percent in one month. But we're going to be down in our one, in our collection for our income tax this year. So sooner or later, that'll, that'll take a toll, starting to see it already.
Okay, I guess I'll entertain a motion to suspend.
So I'll move.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to pass.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have another ordinance authorizing wage and on-call pay adjustment. And Laurie, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number 67, 2014. An ordinance authorizing wage and on-call pay adjustments for the Bryan Street Department.
That basically is bringing the street department up to the same on-call pattern that the wastewater has at, at this time. We had talked about that when we talked about wage adjustments and so forth in the street department. And that basically follows the same rules of 14 hours compensation at the employee's regular rate for each workday, seven calendar days covered. So that setting there is right the same as wastewater.
I move to suspend.
I'll second that.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have employee status change in the fire department.
I might mention before we go on to that, attached to that ordinance for the call time was also an adjustment that the wage committee made for several individuals in the street department, mainly trying to get the low people, the low salaries up to, at least try to get it up to competitive. And we made some adjustments up high. That was attached to that last one.
Is, who's, is anybody going to change?
Let's see. Fire? Fire? Adjustments? Is that going to be Doug or you? Doug, do you want me to handle that, or you probably don't have that? We have two fire adjustments here, basically, also along that line, based on the wage committee study. Again, they took a look at the hourly range of the fires department. And what we have is Joel DeLong is, is being increased 65 cents, the same as the street department was in that area. And also Jason Mannan is, has an increase also of salary. His went up a dollar three. Both of those are effective January 1st of 15. And once again, that's to bring them up in order of the training that they had and so forth along that line.
Any comments in regards?
No, I have no, nothing else. Thank you, Mayor. That covered it.
Bruce has been out on vacation this week, and Doug's been in and out, so I think we've covered their salary increases.
I'll, I'll make a motion, we combine one, one motion and approve and vote.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay. Now we have a status change within the engineering department. So Bryan?
Yeah, we had, it brought to my attention that Frank was categorized as a part-time temporary labor, and he was above that pay scale. So we're just cleaning up some paperwork and reclassifying him as a traffic assistant, which is the same as Scott. His wage is not changing, it's just a classification is all. So he fits in the right pay scale is all.
And keep a clean audit for Laurie.
And keep a clean audit for Laurie. Yep. And again, it's, he only, he works less than 28 hours a week, so he is considered part-time with no benefits. So just to clean up, I would request you approve that for me.
Okay. I move, we adopt it.
I'll second this one.
Keith?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next, number nine, we have an ordinance authorizing salary range changes and classifications. So Laurie, would you please read a number?
Ordinance 68, 2014. An ordinance authorizing the salary ranges and classifications in the compensation program for the city of Bryan, amending ordinance 55, 2013, and repealing any portion of the ordinances inconsistent therewith, and declaring an emergency.
Basically, what you see in that ordinance is the change from January 14 to January 15. We've tried to equalize steps, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12 to 60 cents each, tried to equalize out. That did not affect anybody because everyone was higher than that particular area anyhow. Also, we've added in a, in the fire department series firefighter one, firefighter two, and fire officer, as they get training and so forth and qualify, they can move up to different steps in that area. And as, as Bryan mentioned, we added a traffic assistant part-time, and that's under the inspection and zoning area. Other than that, this ordinance gives everyone in the, on the city side a 2 percent increase for the year. 2 percent recommended increase. And that's the changes from last, last year.
I'll make the motion to suspend.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
I'll second that.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have an ordinance which I don't see.
I don't have that ordinance.
Does anybody have the ordinance, hire city attorney?
Yes.
Do you have one?
Yep.
You?
No, I don't.
Sorry, Rhonda.
Do you have one?
Jeez. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is an ordinance and for hiring of a city attorney. So Laurie, please number and read.
Ordinance number 69, 2014. An ordinance hiring, hiring a city attorney and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rhonda does a nice job for us, as everyone knows, and we have to hire her each year. She's on a one-year basis, so she always holds her breath about these things. Okay. Next, we have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for advanced rehabilitation technology. Laurie, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number 70, 2014. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with advanced rehabilitation technology, LTD, for the project known as improvements to the 100 and 200 blocks of North Allen Street.
Received several bids on this project. Advanced rehabilitation technology was a low bidder. We've worked with them before here in the city. They've got some subcontractors they're working with as well on this project. But I would respectfully request that you suspend the rules and award the project. As you know, $300,000 of this came from a grant from the revolving loan fund, and then the balances supplemented by the half percent and the water department taking care of their share respectively.
I'll make a motion to pass.
I'll second that.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Motion to pass. Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
They're probably going to start here February, March, depending on, you know, it'll take us probably over part of January to get the, the documents around and get everything approved and get material ordered and whatnot. But I anticipate they'll start the underground work over the winter, as long as we have a mild winter. And then, you know, should be wrapped up by the time school starts with the street and everything. So should be a nice project.
Because they'll have to wait anyhow.
Yeah, they can't start the street until...
For the asphalt, right?
Right. Yeah, they won't start the street till probably in May because they don't want to have wet subgrade.
Gotcha.
But I, we talked to the contractor, and their intent is if weather is decent over the winter to go ahead and start and get the underground foot in and get rolling.
Great.
So should see some work in February or early March on that.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda would be another ordinance, and that is to enter into agreement with Susan Lingby Trust for, for some property purchase. Laurie, I'm sorry, please number and read.
Ordinance number 71, 2014. An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a purchase agreement with the Susan J. Lingby Trust for the property commonly known as Page Street, Bryan, Ohio, situated in the county of Williams in the state of Ohio, being 0.934 acres, more or less, with permanent parcel number 06317002003.000.
I guess by purchasing that property, that gives us access to the 80 acres that we just purchased, but the BPA and the council went together. So that gives us access off of Page Street to that area. Any other comment on that, Bryan? That's basically, yep.
It is a storm outlet.
Storm, a storm outlet, mainly.
Saves a lot of money by doing it that way rather than around the other way. It's a benefit.
Yes.
I move the we'd suspend.
Second.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Motion to pass.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a resolution, and that is authorize an appointment. So Laurie, would you please number and read?
Resolution number 38, 2014. A resolution authorized the appointment of the city engineer, Bryan Mealan, to district number five, integrating committee for issue two approval.
Yeah. Number 38.
Yeah, the Integrating Committee for the Ohio Public Works, they require people appointed from different areas of the state. This is the Bowling Green region. I think it's seven or eight counties, and the county has one representative, and then the largest town in each county has a representative, and historically, they've appointed the city engineer. So, my term's up, so I guess I'm asking to be reappointed again for another three-year term to that committee. We meet two or three times a year in Bowling Green and approve the Ohio Public Works funding for this area.
That's basically what it is, is just you review what...
Yeah.
What monies are available?
Well, it starts out as that.
Or client for monies?
Yeah, it starts out as that, and then we actually have a county screening process, which we've been very successful recently with Ohio Public Works projects. Usually, they cover 50% of the project. We did not make any funding for next year. The project we had didn't rank high enough because it's a points ranking system, so we're not going to be receiving any Ohio Public Works monies next year. But, you know, we received Toy Street Water Line, we've done several sewer projects with the Ohio Public Works projects, and I basically sit on that committee at the county level and at the regional level and help approve these projects and help with the ranking.
Good. All right. Gentlemen, your wishes.
I'll make a motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rakupi?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Rakupi?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have the approval or reappointment of park members. Is that Ben?
Yeah, we had two people that they're, one of them, their second term is up, so therefore they have to come off, and that would be Rene Isaac, and then the first one would be Tammy Rouge, her first term has come to an end. Tammy is asked to serve a second term, and Paula Klein would be interested in filling Rene Isaac's vacant spot on the park board. So I'm asking that you appoint Tammy Rouge and Paula Klein to the Bryan Park Board.
I'll make a motion to pass.
I'll second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rakupi?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. All right, next, we have approve appointment of planning zoning appeals commission. Who's, anybody? Okay. As you know, we had, we lost a member this year with Eldon Smith being on that committee, and my recommendation, when I had a recommendation before for different committees, I had several people call and volunteered to serve in different areas, and one is Dave Brown, lives on 524 Wesley, and he has volunteered to serve on that committee. I told Dave that in my 13 years, that committee has only met once, so, and they kind of rotate, but he was willing to serve, and that would be my recommendation.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rakupi?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Okay, next, we have another appointment, and community reinvestment housing council. Mayor, are you handling that, or? Let's see, where's the CRA council?
Yeah, right, CRA.
Okay, in that particular area, Andy actually asked Carrie Slade to be able to do that, and then they, she, from that group, they have to select a third member. I have, right now, Charlie Wolf is appointed by the mayor, Bill Bonney is appointed by the mayor, the council then would be Carrie Slade and Deb Barcy, and then Owen Miller, and then once they meet, they'll select the fifth member from their selection committee. And they said they meet, they don't meet very often, but when they do meet, they'll select another member. So, my recommendation is Carrie Slade to that CRA housing for three-year terms.
Can I ask what that committee does?
They review the CRA areas, the Community...
Reinvestment Act.
Yeah, Community Reinvestment Act, and then they review, actually, they do, I don't want to say they do very little, but they review the applications, make sure they would qualify for CRA, something of that nature. You have to have the committees along that line.
2017, does it start January 1?
For three years. Yeah, December 31, 2017, there should be a correction. Three years.
How often do they meet?
Once a year.
Once a year.
Once a year. Now...
All right, you need a motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who was first?
I was.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rakupi?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Okay, next, we have approve appointment to the Williams County family and children's first council. Yeah, in this particular case, once again, this is a council that meets usually up to one of the local restaurants, and they meet several times a year, and I've had different representatives serve on that. My last representative was on that, but was involved, left because her husband went out of town.
Stacy Carper?
Stacy Carper went out of town and not able to serve on that anymore. So, once again, from my list of people that called in, I called Ellen Walker, and she said she would be glad to serve Williams County Children's First Council. Back on that, they have various members on that, from Judge Byrd, there's attorneys on there, I know the school superintendent is on there, and they handle different businesses involving that children's first council. As I say, and they meet, they meet more often than my other committee, but we have, we should have an appointment, and my recommendation is Ellen Walker.
I move we approve.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rakupi?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Okay, next, we have the reappointment of representatives to the WETCO board. That's another one that's very important, and we reappoint those each year, and right now, Tom Moore and Dan Yarris is serving on that committee, as you know, they're in the process of searching for a new WETCO person, WETCO to take over for that position there, and both Tommy and Dan have been our representatives, and I recommend that they continue to be our representatives for next year in that line.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rakupi?
Yes.
Tommy?
And I will abstain on that. Okay, last thing on the agenda is the reschedule of the January 5 council meeting. We had talked about that at the last meeting, and one member was not able to attend on the January 5, which is Monday, so it was kind of agreed that we talk about it this meeting and move that meeting till January 6, on Tuesday night at 7:00. So, reschedule January 5 meeting to Tuesday, January 6. And we'll try to get that right at the top of your agenda, what day we're on.
It'll be same time, 7?
7:00, yeah, following the BPA meeting at 5. Okay.
Can I have a motion on that, please?
Oh, yes, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Rakupi?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. That's kind of a reorganizational meeting, we'll be passing the gavel and different things like that, informing the committees, and we're all set to go on that, so that would be good. Okay. I think that's it from here, so go around the chamber here. Police chief, anything at all? Mike?
No.
Okay. Tyson, anything from you? Brian? Doug? All righty. Ben? Rick? All righty. Al, anything from BPA?
Anything.
All righty. Your meeting's tomorrow, right, Al?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, all righty. Mr. Rick?
I just wanted to say, with the approval of the budgets, I appreciated the department heads and what they did with their budgets and the things that they asked for. I've been involved with other organizations where they ask for the stars and the moon, and we have to fight our way through trying to figure out what we're going to actually spend money on, and our department heads here at the city are very fiscally responsible for the most part, and I really appreciate that as a member of the budget committee. And the other thing that I have is a happy new year to everyone, and it's going to be a busy 2015.
Just happy new year to everybody, and let's have a good year.
Mr. Ray?
My same ideas as a happy new year, and let's have a great 2015.
Same thing on my end, I hope everybody has a safe and a happy new year, and I've been sitting at this chair for the last probably year and a half, and I'm sure I haven't made everybody happy, but you've made me happy, so anyhow, but thanks for your support, thanks for your work and your cooperation with me, and during the last year and a half or so that I've been a president of council. We do have very good employees, do have very good department heads, and also our relationship with the BPA, and that is growing stronger and stronger, and it's just a, it's a win-win situation for everybody involved, especially the citizens of Bryan. So, again, thank you so much. Lori?
Yes, sir.
All right, Rhonda?
Happy new year and go Bucks!
There you go. Thank you.
Great.
Mayor? Once again, I echo the cooperation that we do get from our employees and the department head and all the workers of the city, and the work with the BPA. We really appreciate that, and we're getting some things going forward. I think the mayor's only success is having a good council and good workers and good employees, and if I have the success that I think that I have, it's because of you folks, and as I said earlier, she didn't want to come in here, I'm losing my secretary as of tomorrow, but you're welcome to come in, everybody at the end, and have a little cake if you want to, since you didn't get any dinner, you're welcome to come back and have a little cake and punch to wish her well. So, other than that, according to Tyson, city Bryan offices will be closed Thursday,